We have members that are certified and will be glad to step up to the plate and help fulfill these vacancies. The next thing is there's some federal grant money that will be coming up available next year for the possibility of us doing a training center. I've been pursuing this grant for several years now, and I don't know how far we'll get, but I am going to apply for the grant. But we would have to have somewhere to put that building, and we might have to have some matching money to the tune of 5% with that. So I don't know how far that'd go, but I will apply for that grant. Anything we can do to upgrade the health and safety and welfare of our firefighters and get them better trained, as well as our EMS and working with the sheriff's department, will be a good thing. And the county has the property at the old prison. There would be an excellent place for that. But we continue to look forward to your support, and we continue to give our time to help our county that we so do love and the citizens therein. And it's nice to have the communication center back up and going. Thank you.
Next is Ms. Emily Truman. Back to your meeting time.
First off, just on behalf of the dispatchers, we wanted to say thank you to Commissioners Cradigan-Freeman for helping us out with some chairs and dispatch, as our chairs broke a couple of weeks ago, and then also to EM1 for getting those chairs replaced. I know that's been brought up at lots of different meetings, but we did have some that we were able to borrow, and then we've had new ones come in since then, so we do appreciate that. The only other major thing, really, is the meeting times, which I was very excited to see on the agenda this month. I've heard from many others that they were very excited, and we're very hopeful that you will take into consideration the requests that have been being made for months now to move the meeting times back to the 6:30 time slot. As many people do have to take off early from work if they want to be here. I think that's true possibly for even some of the commissioners sitting here, that they have to leave early in order to be here. So we just ask that you please consider that. The attendance the last few months, I think, has been a good thing, and I feel like it could be more should the meeting times be more appropriate. And then the last thing was, as we move forward with what has been known as COVID money, just ask that you please consider the true infrastructure as you're going forward with the plans for those funds. The water system, the fire hydrants, 911, all things I've mentioned before. I had the opportunity to go meet with one of the fire departments in the county recently within the past couple of weeks, and was told that they actually have a fire hydrant that is out of service in a couple of areas of their district. And that's concerning because water halving becomes a requirement, and sometimes that makes things more difficult. So as you move forward and considering those things, I do ask that you please listen to the pleas of your first responders and to the pleas of your citizens in how to handle the use of that money. So, thank you.
Last speaker is Anthony Saunders, housing.
First of all, I'd just like to say to the board, thank you, to our county attorney and our county manager. What if your roof leaked every time it rained? What if the sheet rock in your house fell on you in your living room, in your kitchen, and in your bedroom? What if your toilet never flushes, and you have to plunge it every time you get ready to use it? What if you smell mold and mildew in your home all the time? What if your wood stove was so holy that the acids from the stove would fall on the floor and possibly set your house on fire? Roaches, mice, all in your cabinets? These were just a few of the conditions that four families here in Gates County lived through for a long period of time. When these families came to the Housing Committee for help, I knew that day that I knew the day that I condemned three of those four homes, that a replacement was the only answer for these families, and the journey began. The Board of Commissioners and the Housing Committee worked hard for a while to make this project work. So tonight, I say thank you to all of the Housing Committee members, to the county attorney, county manager, and all of the Board of Commissioners, who kept this project moving in a positive way. Commissioners continue to move the county forward in a positive way. Soon, we will see, hopefully, a Hardee's, McDonald's, Burger King, CVS, Walgreens in Gates County, just like they are in our surrounding counties. I would like to say and give a special thanks to the late Reverend Dr. Henry Jordan. He kept us lifted up from the Board of Commissioners, when we really felt sometimes this day would never come. Board, you guys and the Housing Committee have made the quality of life better for four families here in the county, and that's a good feeling. Keep up the good work and stay positive, work for the county, and continue to move on. And for those who don't really know exactly what I'm talking about, there's four families who have, their homes have been demolished in the last couple of weeks, and there are new modular homes are coming in. Hopefully, these families will be in their homes in the next couple of weeks, three at the most. So it's a good feeling when you know you have helped somebody, especially to make the quality of life better. So again, I say thank you to you guys. I know sometime you got frustrated at us as the Housing Board. I thank Reba Holly for taking the leadership and helping push this with you guys. So again, I say thank you. Continue the good work that you're doing here in the county. Thank you.
That's the last speaker.
That's the last speaker. Now, we'll hear from Mr. Tim Lyons with Malden &amp; Jenkins LLC, who will do the audit presentation. May I approach? And you've heard that we amended the agenda so that when you finish your presentation, we'll discuss the contract.
Yeah, that sounds great. And I figured because I heard that the NC DOT is not coming, I can just take their time too, right? If you're up here for a couple of hours, we'll run through it. Appreciate y'all having me here tonight.
For a little levity, I heard the guys down there talking about March Madness or something.
Yeah, everybody's got somewhere to be. So what I've got here is a...
We need to take a recess for just a couple of minutes so he can pull that up and turn it around.
Okay.
I apologize.
No, no, that's fine.
My IT person wants to... Let's take a two-minute recess.
Two and a minute and a half.
He's going to move that.
You need to... One, you need to...
Okay.
I tell you what, I'm glad you're not... DOT can be... It's interesting sometimes.
Back in session. Mr. Malden? Mr. Lyons, excuse me.
So what you all have in front of you is a hard copy printout of what's on the screen here, just a few kind of PowerPoint slides, in essence, to go over the results of the county's fiscal year ending June 30, 2021, financial and compliance audit. So as it says on the inside of that first page there that says Agenda, it's really just will go quickly over the engagement team, the results of the audit. We've got a few slides on some financial ratios and trends that we typically like to talk about, and then some comments, recommendations, and then certainly if y'all have any questions, I've got a slide at the end for that, and certainly as I'm going, if y'all have any questions, feel free to stop me there. The next slide there about the engagement team, I include this in here just to point out that, you know, this is, when we conduct an audit, there's a minimum of two partners at our firm that are involved with every single audit, and I served as the engagement partner, so ultimately, I'm the one responsible for the county's audit, signing the reports and those things. And then James Benz, who is another partner in our governmental practice, serves the role of Engagement Quality Control Review, and basically, he's not involved in the audit at all. When we finish, myself and the other members of the team get finished, we send this whole report and file over to James and have him do a completely independent review. So we really, you know, engagement quality is very important to us, and we know we have, you know, high ethical standards we have to follow as the independent CPAs, but just in our own governmental practice, this is very important because we do spend a lot of time working with governments throughout the year, and we take it very seriously. So that was your engagement team for the 2021 audit. On the next page there, we have the results of the audit, and, you know, the highlights from this slide really kind of starts with that second main bullet point that says, "Report on the 2021 basic financial statements." You know, the most important thing is what sort of opinion did we render on the financial statements? So we issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the county's financial statements. There is no higher or better opinion that you can get. Unmodified is a fancy accounting auditing term for clean. So a clean opinion on the financial statements, which is the most important part. The next couple of slides that we have, what this, these are known as what are called the required communications. So these are the things that we, as your independent CPA, have to submit to those charged with governance. We have to submit them to you in writing, which I have done, and so I don't plan to go through and read every single one of these. I think there are a few of these that are important to point out, so I'll touch on those briefly. Underneath that first bullet point where it says significant accounting policies, the fourth item down, it talks about the implementation of a new accounting standard. So if you do, if you have the county's financial report, if you ever kind of do a side-by-side and flip and just see what changed, how did things change from year to year, you will notice that in the past, we had pages in there for what were known as agency funds, where the county is essentially kind of acting as a pass-through. Now, those are called fiduciary funds or custodial funds, so they do look a little bit different, but that was brought about by a new accounting standard, GASB statement number 84. So that is a new statement that we had to implement in the 2021 financial statements. On that next page, the second bullet point there that says, "Relationship with management," we received full cooperation from the county's management and staff. I always like to touch on this, and what does that mean? We were hanging out, you know, going out for drinks afterwards. That's not what that means. Full cooperation means when we conduct an audit, we ask for a lot of documentation, access to records, access to individuals in different departments and what have you. Full cooperation means that we, those things were given to us without any sort of issues. We were not, we didn't feel like we had any, you know, point in time where we were having things withheld from us. We didn't have any difficulty getting access to people or systems or what have you. So full cooperation from management, I think, is important to point out, and also, I just would take a second to say that I appreciate all of Kim's hard work during the audit. Again, working through the challenges of COVID, we did the majority of the audit remotely again. It was difficult, as it has been for a couple of years with all that, but appreciate all of Kim and her team's hard work to do that. The next bullet point there, audit adjustments. I think it's important to point out, that second hash mark there that says there were no unrecorded adjustments, sometimes when we conduct an audit, we can identify a difference or an adjustment, and maybe end up, we decide for one reason or another not to post it. It's considered immaterial or something like that, but we didn't have any of those this year. So no unrecorded adjustments, everything is considered that we identified has been included in the county's financial statements. And then last, the last required communication there, the bottom one that says auditor independence on the next page, always like to touch on this, just to remind folks, we have to be completely independent of the county in order to conduct an audit and render an opinion on the county's financial statements. Not only do we have to be independent in accordance with our ethical standards, which is set by the American Institute of CPAs, but in accordance with government auditing standards, because we are auditing federal and state awards, which are even more stringent than our professional standards. So have to be independent of the county in order to render an opinion. The next couple of slides we have talk just a little bit about some financial ratios. Fund balance in the general fund, obviously very important, something that everybody wants to talk about and look at. At the end of the county's fiscal year that ended June 30, 2021, unassigned fund balance was about 39% of annual expenditures. So how does that rank us compared to other counties of similar size, which you can see, similar counties in North Carolina, we're kind of right on par with what other counties of similar size are. The GFOA, which is the Government Finance Officers Association, they recommend, kind of their benchmark would be between 60 and, I've seen 60 and 90, 60 and 120 days, but either way, the county's unassigned fund balance in the general fund is in a good position there at June 30, 2021. So that's a good thing to see, and you can see, we've seen over the last four years how that fund balance has trended up and trended into where it is, or where it was at June 30 of 2021. The next slide is just some tax revenue per capita, just kind of looking broadly at taxes and how it fares per capita, especially when compared to, again, other counties in the state, I think is a relevant comparison. $642 per person about, when you look at the total tax revenues divided by the county's population. The smallest 20 counties in the state, which would be where Gates would fall, about $725 a person versus statewide, if we look at every single county, about $737 per person. So you can see where the tax burden per person or per capita in Gates County is a little bit below those averages, but certainly not significantly out of whack or anything like that. The next slide, looking at the general fund's budget, I think the biggest thing to take away when we looked at the general fund for the year, the final budget reflected an anticipated addition to fund balance. So where we're going to put some money in reserve, to call it that, was about $550,000. And for the fiscal year ended June 30 of 2021, the county added about $1.9 million to fund balance for the fiscal year. So again, that kind of fits in with that other chart that shows fund balance kind of continually growing the last four years. And when we started working with the county four years ago, the fund balance was fairly low, and we've seen it kind of continue to trend in the right direction the last few years. The biggest significant revenues in excess of budget, sales taxes, which is a pretty common trend we see across most of our counties in the state the last couple of years, there were, especially when COVID hit, there was a lot of warnings about, we don't know what this is going to happen, and pretty consistently across the board, we've seen sales tax revenues and ABC revenues continue to go up. So everybody went home and drank and online shopped, is basically what happened when the pandemic happened. So the next slide is just looking at the county's two enterprise funds, the landfill fund and the water fund. You know, these funds, the basis of accounting is a little bit different with these funds than with the general fund. We're on the full accrual basis of accounting, so a lot of times, it's more important to look at cash flows. That's kind of with business-type activities like the landfill and the water fund, we're looking at these more like a private sector business, and we're looking at cash flows, and both funds had positive cash flows from operations this year. And while the water fund had a decrease in net position for the year, so, you know, a net decrease in equity, if you want to look at it that way, of about $400,000, important to consider there is about $300,000 of it was depreciation, which is a non-cash expense. That's where we're recording the annual depreciation on the assets used in the water system. So overall, both funds at the end of the year have a positive balance in unrestricted net position. So again, no significant deficits, we're not, you know, we're not operating at a significant operating loss, or we're not using, no consumption of cash in operations. Those are the main things you're looking for when you're looking at the enterprise The next slide talks a little bit about our single audit engagement. Essentially, what this is, is as a part of the county's annual audit, we also have to look at the grants, look at different grant activity. This year, we had to audit two major federal programs. We did not have any state single audits, the county's total state expenditures for grant programs did not exceed the threshold for having to have any grants audited. The two major programs, Medicaid, this is required to be tested annually. Annually, we have to test this, the State Department of DHATs, and the state requires we test this. And then the coronavirus relief funds, or the CARES Act money. This is different, and this is not the ARPA or CSL FRF, depending upon what y'all are calling that. This is not what this is. County didn't spend any of that money last year. This is the coronavirus relief funds that were received in the previous year, so we had to audit both of those. We had no findings, no issues with internal controls over compliance, so a clean opinion on the single audit as well. The next couple of slides are really just some recommendations. We call these management recommendations or management points. These are items that came up during the audit that we just feel like are important to point out, talk about with management. This first one has to do with the financial reporting process, and what we've talked about with Kim is that while the county's finance department is small, relatively speaking, and we're not talking about a big, you know, multi-department decentralized operation, but a lot of the, a lot of the process for doing financial close and closing out the year is not written down, documented, well documented, and the idea there would be that if something were to happen, having somebody that can step in and kind of perform those procedures, having a well-documented process for financial close for year-end wrap-up and all those types of things. So just a recommendation that we would take some time and put some pen to paper there and come up with a written-out process for that financial closeout process. The next management point that we have, we consider this sort of an industry recommendation. This is something that we talk about with a lot of our clients. This does not mean that we did any sort of in-depth IT testing or identified any significant issues or what have you, but we do know that unfortunately, IT systems can be hacked for a long time. It was governments of fairly large sizes, but now we're seeing it happen to governments of all sizes, and so just a recommendation that we, especially as we continue to move into this environment where more is being done remotely, more things are being done in the clouds, more devices are being connected to our network, all those types of things that we just consider cybersecurity risk management and all the decisions that we're making and make sure that we're paying attention to it because of the risks that are present in the environment nowadays. The last slide that I have with information on it really just has to do with a couple of slides on things that are happening right now. We have a couple of new accounting standards we'll be implementing in the next couple of years. I was meeting with Kim earlier, talking about this first one here about GASB 87, which is leases. I could stand up here and talk about technical accounting things for a while, but you all don't want me to do that, so I'll just say that we are aware of those things and working with the county to make sure we get them implemented correctly. We know that on the next slide, there's still a ton going on at the federal level related to COVID, all the different funding streams, all the different things that we're seeing out there. You know, we've, Kim and I have talked through a couple of these things today as well, and just making sure that we're paying attention to all the things that continue to happen. The LGC has done a pretty good job of trying to keep everybody informed and up to speed on all the different issues that have popped up with, related to all these different funding streams that have come out from the federal government since the beginning of COVID. And then last, but not least, just to remind y'all that we do free quarterly continuing education for all of our governmental clients. Certainly, if any of y'all want to be on that email distribution list, just get your email address to Kim, and she can get it to me, and I'll make sure that y'all receive the communications on there. And so with that, I am happy to take any questions that you all have.
Any of the commissioners have any questions for Tim?
No, I would just say this is the best presentation I've had. And you, as county commissioner, it's very clear and understandable. Most of the time, it's not. Thank you.
Well presented.
Thank you.
I have one question. When you were talking about management recommendations over there, and you said something about documentation and like closeout and things like that, is there a template that you could provide to us that would benefit?
Sure. Yeah, I mean, one of the things that we have, we provide at the beginning of the audit, this documents that are called internal control questionnaires. Kim probably loves having to get them and review them and fill them out. They're kind of cumbersome, but they do, those include a lot of examples of controls that you would want to see in the financial closeout, wrap-up, year-end process. And then beyond that, I know the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, they've got a bunch of best practices, toolkits, what have you, so can certainly provide, you know, Kim, recommendations on any of those type things to kind of base it on. The biggest thing that we would talk, make sure we talk through is with a small finance department, we want to continue to maintain segregation of duties, and so that's the biggest challenge with a small finance department. We want to make sure that we don't allow any significant controls to be performed by one person, you know, where you could have control of a transaction from beginning to end. That's the biggest challenge with a small finance department, is making sure that if, you know, as best you can, mitigating controls, putting those in place, and making sure that we get others involved as we need to, but we can work with Kim on that for sure.
And then the other question that I had is on the free...
Yes, sir.
...quarterly continuing education.
Yes, sir.
And so I just briefly looked over that, and it does say locations on there, so are you actually doing it, location or you Zoom?
We're doing it all Zoom right now. Everything we've been doing, it's been all virtual since the second quarter of 2020. And it's funny you bring that up. We've had conversations before about, do we want to go back to doing it in person? But we've, the attendance has been so much greater doing it over Zoom, that we probably will continue to offer at least once per quarter, free, continue to do it virtually, where we have access to it either over Zoom or some other online platform.
Madam Chair, I would make sure that county manager sees that back page there.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to segue into the contract, Kim. I know you're in here. Commissioner, if you turn to your packet, you will see a memorandum prepared by our finance officer, Kim Outland, about Gates County's three-year audit contract has ended as of the FY '21 audit. Okay? Have y'all read that? Okay? It states that, for the audience, LLC has provided wonderful services to Gates County over the past three years. I have worked with them. If I have ever needed an answer to a financial question, they have always been very prompt and informative. They were instrumental in assisting us during all the necessary cleanup after the software conversion in 2018. I have attached a three-year cost proposal to extend our contract with Malden &amp; Jenkins LLC for the board to review. My recommendation would be to continue with this company as outlined in the proposal. Action needed once we have reviewed it. The board needs to make a motion and vote on the approval or denial of the extension of the contract with Malden &amp; Jenkins to provide audit services for Gates County for an additional three years.
I make a motion that we approve the contract for an additional three years.
And I'll second that motion. Very good job.
It's been properly motion and second that we continue the three-year contract with Malden &amp; Jenkins. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Tim. We'll see you again.
Thank you.
Now, we'll have two presentations back to back. The first will be the Housing Committee by Ms. Reba Green-Holly.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. First, I'd like to do the Housing Report. I'd like to thank the Commissioners for the support that you give the Housing Committee. And for those who don't know, the Housing Committee is here to assist with elderly, disabled, low-income, and/or veterans, to help them with health and safety issues in their home that will help them stay in their homes much longer, which eventually addresses us as taxpayers, saving dollars on Medicaid if they have to go into assisted living. And this committee was started years ago out of the need DSS saw, Department of Social Services here in the county, with housing standards and safety issues with its citizens. We are a 501(c)(3), and we are a committee made up of people here in the county, and I think some of them are in the audience, but just so you'll know who's on this committee and if they're here, if they'll please stand. I know some are virtual. We have Rita Blair with EIC, Joan Bond, representing the community, McArthur Brit, faith organization, Shakira Jordan with EIC, myself, New Middle Swamp Baptist Church Representative Shirley Johnson, and Valerie Riddick, Gates County Transportation System, Patrice Lassiter. Dr. Althea Riddick is representing the Commissioners, Anthony Saunders, representing the community, and Willie Smith, representing Department of Social Services. And we do welcome any other people in the community who would like to be on this committee. Our report for '21-'22, even though COVID has impacted us for the last couple of years, we were able to reach 13, we received 13 housing repair requests, and out of that, two were not qualified for service. Four were referred to state grant funds that Burnett and Associates had. One was referred to EIC. Two tarps were installed on a roof. Two roof repairs were done. Two were referred to the Roanoke... repairs were done. Two were referred to the Roanoke Electric Upgrade to Save program, and one was referred to independent living. Even though COVID has impacted us, we are still getting requests for assistance. We've served as a sounding board for the clients who had complaints concerning the status of the replacement grant, because we were the committee that identified the four individuals who qualified for that, those replacement homes. And when those funds were received, they didn't have to go searching for people. They were already on a waitlist for any funding that came in. So quite naturally, anytime they were trying to find out information, they were coming to us to find out for them. And we're glad to hear that the progress has moved forward on those four homes, because they are elderly individuals, and we were just hoping they'd get to get in those homes before anything happened. We also have secured two volunteers to assist with small home repairs. And we collaborate with Roanoke Electric with their Upgrade to Save and Solar Share program that works with trying to help with energy efficiency and helping since in our area, 50% or more of the homes are substandard. We received church donations, and also we have been meeting and developed a comprehensive marketing and branding plan to increase awareness of housing assistance here in the county. We have gone live with a webpage, which is GCHousingC-O-M-M.org. And we also have resources listed on that website for people who might need additional housing information. Our application is listed there that you can pull off, and you can either fill it out online, and then print it off and send it to us, or you can print it off and fill it out by hand. It lists all the members and our mission on that website. We also are in the process of having PayPal and Amazon Smile set up, so donations can come in. We meet monthly, the third Monday, from 1:00 to 2:00 via Zoom currently. We were in person before COVID. And then I think the members, Ms. Chestnut has a list of the members attached to the report that I gave her. And I think that concludes my report for housing. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions for Ms. Hallie?
Okay.
I think that the website has that report, I hope.
I will put it up.
I want to put that on the website. And while I'm thinking about it, we're also going to post the audit that Mr. Lyons went through. We can put that on the website. So if you want to go back and look at it, it'll be available to the citizens.
Okay. All right. Now I would like to move into the Rosenwall School presentation. I want to thank you for the opportunity to update you on the Rosenwall School activities in Gates County. And I'll start with a brief explanation of the Rosenwall Schools. There are four key aspects to Rosenwall School movement and legacy. The Rosenwall Schools held a special place in history and represented a landmark in the history of African-American education. The Rosenwall School construction project began in response to the lack of adequate schools for African-American children in the rural South that followed key historic and antecedent events such as the Civil War and the abolishment of slavery in 1865, and the 1896 landmark U.S. Supreme Court decision in Plessy versus Ferguson that declared separate but equal facilities did not violate the 14th Amendment of the Constitution. The second key aspect is North Carolina lacked a uniform system for state-supported education and adequate schools for the education of African-American children, and were lacking, and they were lacking in the rural South. The Rosenwall School Project was the first major movement committed to advancing the cause of education on behalf of African-American children in rural South. The value of an education, this is the third point, was shared by African-American leaders and families. The national leader Booker T. Washington called upon wealthy northern philanthropists such as Julius Rosenwall, president of Sears and Roebuck Company, to donate funds for the building of schools for African-American children in rural South. As a result, the Rosenwall Fund was established in 1917 for the well-being of mankind. The fund called for public-private partnerships and required that members of the local white and black communities collaborate and raise money to qualify for matching funds. Principles of personnel and shared responsibility for the betterment of the race and mankind, and the belief education was critical to self-sufficiency and preparing individuals for work and productive roles in society were embedded in the Rosenwall School movement. The fourth bullet is even though the Rosenwall Schools were conceived in response to an epic time in history, and to address or correct the unequal status of education in schools for African-American children in the rural South, by virtue of changes in history, they are also, they also eventually became identified with the negativity of segregation. In 1954, the U.S. Supreme Court decision in Brown versus Board of Education declared separate but equal schools were unconstitutional. Most Rosenwall Schools have fallen prey to age and neglect. However, both the physical structure and the historical heritage of Rosenwall Schools must be restored and preserved, or we risk losing an important part of our history. Carrie Pittman was credited for building 28 Rosenwall Schools in eastern North Carolina. The Rosenwall Schools held, hold a unique place in history, and they also held a special place in the hearts and minds of African-American families who fought and made sacrifices so their children could receive an education. Some of that was an excerpt from Brenda Hamilton, who was the granddaughter of Gary Pittman, Carrie Pittman, who gave the Rosenwall Homecoming speech that was held here October 30th, 2013, in Gates County. There were six Rosenwall Schools in Gates County. Buckland, Cora Peak, Hobbsville, Reed's Grove, which is the EIC building, a lot of people call it, Rennelson, and Roduka Number Two. Currently, there are three standing. Roduka, which is a private residence, Cora Peak School, and Reed's Grove School, which is the EIC building. Buckland transitioned into Buckland Training School, which is now Buckland Elementary, and Sunbury transitioned to Sunbury Training School, which is now TS Cooper School. Reed's Grove School is owned by the county. In 2011, with the Growing Gates Strategic Planning Process that involved the residents of Gates County, the goal was to identify economic development strategies that would help bring tourism to the county. The designation of the Reed's Grove School as a historic building was one of those strategies. Funding was obtained from two grants, the Growing Gates Project, which is currently a part of the current Gates County strategic plan developed in 2021, and New Generation Youth Leadership Project, which involved 4-Hers. As a result, the historic application was submitted and approved August 30th, 2011. Two historic markers were placed on site. The Reed's Grove Homecoming Program was held October 30th, 2013. A booklet was compiled, and a copy was given to the historic society, along with many of the alumni of these schools. We recorded interviews with them, so we would have them for history's sake. The project would not have been possible without the assistance of the Reed Grove Alumni Committee. This was a collaboration of Gates County Extension, local government, youth, and adults. Currently, the Cora Peak alumni and friends are interested in preserving their school. I will be working with them to achieve this goal. We welcome Commissioner Hoffler to assist as the, as the preservation of history is her passion. Commissioners, even though some renovations have been done on the Reed's Grove School in the past, attention was not, and has not been given, to ensuring renovations and maintenance of the interior was or will be completed in a fashion that would support the integrity of the historic building and bring it back to its original glory. I ask that the integrity of the building be restored with some attention and care as, with the same attention and care as was done with this historic courthouse. I also ask that Commissioners support Rosenwall School activities in Gates County. In addition, the Reed Grove School, Cora Peak School, and identification of locations of others with markers is an asset to the county African-American tour project that Commissioner Hoffler is pursuing. We also welcome Commissioner Hoffler with any other suggestion and ideas. There are others in the audience that support the Rosenwall Schools in Gates County. And Madam Chair, if you would like for them to raise their hand or stand, please do so.
They may raise their hands or stand if they're in the office.
In closing, we are who we are today due to these types of schools and the vision of Julius Rosenwall, and Booker T. Washington, and our forefathers, who knew the importance of a quality education. This has not changed during our times. And I quote, "If you want to understand today, you have to search yesterday." A PowerPoint of the Rosenwall Schools has been presented to the Commissioners, and it is going to be loaded on the Commissioner webpage for those that are, that are interested. In addition, FISH University has a Rosenwall School database. And so I was going to get this done before I retired, but it didn't happen. But it's happening now. We have only four pictures of the Rosenwall Schools that were here in Gates County. This was the Hobbsville Old School. These are going to be hung in the Reed Grove School. This one is Hobbsville. This was a, a second building that was done in Hobbsville. This one is the building that's in Cora Peak, that is currently still standing. And this one is what Reed's Grove School looked like initially. I have pictures of the one in Roduka, but since it is a private residence, I do not want to put those up. And also, the comments that were made on the four aspects of the history of Rosenwall Schools will be hung with that.
Commissioners, are there any questions?
Are there any questions or comments from Ms. Green-Hallie? She's stuck there at the podium.
Well, certainly, I had, I have known about Rosenwall Schools for numerous years, and I was at the 2013 program. I believe I spoke there.
Yeah.
And Commissioner Freeman was there as well. And I can remember the Hobbsville School, so it has been destroyed since, or has disappeared since, in the last 20 years, I guess. And we need to preserve those. This African-American Heritage Trail, they want to have places to visit, not just a sign. They want something to go into and all. And I would suggest maybe that you might want to tour Jarvisburg and Cora Peak County. They have done an excellent job restoring that to the original kind of the layout and all. And they do have that, that you might want to check with them, and also step with Reed Thomas.
We have checked with Reed Thomas when we did the initial Reed's Grove, and I have all his recommendations for how the building should look, and what we should do to preserve the historical aspects of it. Just some of the repairs or replacement of lights have not been historically correct. And there is a divisional wall that pulls down that makes it into two classrooms. It was a two-classroom school. And that wall is still in the wall, but it has been covered up with sheet rock, et cetera, and that really needs to be
And that's probably a very easy fix.
Yeah.
But you still have the platform and the larger meeting room that's pretty much in that.
Yeah. Any other questions?
There's a wall in the Reed's Building that was erected a few years ago. I don't believe it goes all the way to the ceiling. Are you talking about taking that wall down?
No. It depends on when you talk with Reed Thomas, what they suggest. But at least having the wall that divided the two restored, and go back and take the fluorescent lights out and put the, they had lights similar to this one hanging there. And just, there are some cosmetic things that can be done in his recommendations to keep it more on the historical perspective versus what some of the things that have been done. And of course, they do have recommendations of the paint colors, et cetera, because these were all built to enhance the light, using the natural light, et cetera, to help with learning process. And so I have all of that.
Any other questions or comments for, if she's come before?
Great presentation.
Thank you. And the Cora Peak individuals are going to start meeting to figure out what they can do with the building. It's located beside their church.
I see Mrs. Byrd is here.
Yes.
And Ms. Byrd is
Help with that.
Okay. Thank you for the presentation. Very enlightening to many of us. And we will, as a board, we will have some discussion about what we need to do as a board of commissioners. We own the building, this county building, so. But thank you. She did a lot of work. She called me a couple of months ago with all of this paraphernalia and things in her attic. And I didn't know what she was talking about. And she contacted FISH University, and the money that was used to frame those pictures, they already had those funds. No county funds were used to do that, per se. So she already had, from leftover from the other committees, I guess, when y'all was meeting. And so she went to work and got that done, and I appreciate it. On behalf of the board, we really appreciate that work you put in.
I forgot to say there will be little plaques put on the pictures in order.
Little plaques put on the pictures, so I guess description, they're on order. Ms. Hoffler, I know you're the historian, and I know you have your plate full, but you're the historian for the county, and work very closely with their committee. When they get their committee together, ensure that we stay informed and tasked. Anybody want to help, Ms. Hoffler? Commissioner Hoffler, just raise your hand.
I'll accept help.
If she needs help, I'll be laying the help.
Okay.
Now y'all, wear your shirt and your credit. Commissioner Cradis is going to help.
Let me write this down.
Write that down.
I'm not going to sign without help.
Thank you again, and thank you for volunteering.
Madam Chair, the, we didn't spend a lot of thank you time on the Housing Committee. But they, they deserve our applause for the work that they do, and the people who volunteer along with them. And I know they're not all here. And I know that Anthony can tell you that the numbers, the number of volunteers used to be a little bit larger. I can, I can remember that myself. And, but we need to applaud what they've done.
All right. I'd like to say I forgot to mention that I was in Hereford last week with Michael Irvin, who's the director of Admiral Commission. He's the one that's writing the grant, well, had written the grant for our urgent repair program. And we're waiting on information whether we're going to get granted for that. But he did, I did mention the Housing Committee, and they are very interested in using the Housing Committee to follow, you know, applications to them, because they're in the county. And so I'm going to let him know that Reba Green-Hallie has presented. He knows who Reba is, and showed us Sharon Smith. is, and showed us Sharon Smith. She's their program developer, her their grant writer, and they want to work with the county with the Housing Committee when we get that grant, not if, but when we get that grant, so that we can have a seamless from our citizens to Admiral Commission. Okay. Now, we're going to have administrative reports. Mr. Chris Hill, tax report.
How are y'all?
Hey, how are you?
In your packet, you should have the February 2022 Tax Collector's Report. You'll notice that we did collect about $260,000 in February. That put our collection rate up about 1% higher than it was at this time last year. Funds from the DMV are still strong, $82,000 in DMV funds. We have sent any delinquent accounts to the Gates County Index, so that'll be out next week. We received $4,600 from Zikeas Legal Services in the month of February. Any other questions regarding the report?
Any questions from the commissioners?
I did want to bring up, it's on the agenda, the dates for the Board Equilization Review. In past years, we've tried to combine those with commissioners' meetings since we're all here at one time. So if it pleases the board, I looked at the calendar, and it looks like to me the next date for a commissioner meeting will be the 20th of April, and the one after that will be the 18th of May. If we can convene and reconvene on one of those dates if that pleases the board.
Is this for equalization and review?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Two meetings will take care of that.
Yes, sir. We have to open and close it.
And we had to have it 30 days apart, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, it's close to 30 days, three to four weeks.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
No hearing, excuse me, no hearing, public hearing involved.
No, sir. We'll open it, and then if anyone has any if anyone has any appeals, they'll call my office and they'll schedule the appeal with me. If we can't work it out, then I'll bring that to the board between the opening and the closing of the Review Board dates.
And we need a motion on that.
I've asked for a motion to pleasure the board.
I'll make the motion, Madam Chairman. I'll say.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
I ask the board clerk to please put those on their calendar, April 20th and May 18th.
And we just had those prior to our meeting.
Yes, ma'am. And depending on what the outcome of the meeting dates are, then we've been doing it like 30 minutes before the meeting starts. So I'll need, I guess I'll find out later this evening or tomorrow if those dates are if the times are going to change so when I publish that in the newspaper, I can have the right times on that.
Okay. Before you take your seat, I'm going to call up Mr. Yur from Yur precinct. I was contacted indirectly by Mr. Yur about a piece of property that he wants to discuss with the board as far as his proposal, and that's why I'm calling him up now. He's also been in conversation with Mr. Hill.
My name is Perry Yur. I live in 230 Pointahai Road, Yur, North Carolina. Been living there all my life. I got a few things. Be all right if I pay these eight?
Oh, the board clerk, she'll pass them out for you, sir.
Well, I don't want to get mixed up.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
How you doing, Perry?
Several weeks ago, they had a tax sale at Fort High's door, and Yur Volunteer Fire Department was very interested in it because the land was adjacent to their parking lot. And the lawyer there who auctioned off the property, he didn't understand why I didn't get a bid for it. And I told him, I said, well, the reason you didn't get bid for it is a liability rather than an asset. And that same piece of property, probably most of you don't remember, Renee McGuinness was the tax administrator, was advertised to be sold, but for some reason, they pulled it from the documents, said the paperwork wasn't right. So what I'm trying to say is the county having received a sum of tax from that piece of land in over 30 years. If you look at the piece of white paper on the on the left there, your packet, you can see the highlighted piece is the land that we're talking about. It's less than two tenths of acre. You can't put a trailer on it, can't put a septic tank on it. It's just useless. And if you stand, if you would stand in front of, if you're familiar with, in front of your fire department and face away from the building, it would be right in front of you. That's what you would see. Two different individuals donated these pictures just to show you what kind of conditions that we're talking about. The first picture in the in the black packet is taken from Pointahai Road. You can see a little bit of the road there, the first picture there. The second picture, you see Pointahai Road, and you can see a heist to the left over there. I talked to this lady, she's a very elderly lady, living by herself, and I went and talked to her about, we were trying to get the land, and she said, oh, my God, please try to get the land. I'm scared the heists is going to catch on fire and set mine on fire. She said, she sees rats, snakes, and skunks and everything else out there. In fact, one skunk was killed right in front of it a while back. And then the third and fourth pictures just show you the condition of the heist. Yur Volunteer Fire Department, we would like to have the land. We would make it a parking lot and also be used for training. We would have more members from the fire department tonight, but they had a call right at 5:00 o'clock. So we had planned to sort of pack the Fort High, but that didn't really happen, but we appreciate the ones that did come.
I'm glad it did.
It was a foul, happened on road. What we would like, we would appreciate if you would consider donating this land to the fire department, and we would make it an asset for the community, for the county, and we would be able to use it for parking, for training, and a lot of the fire departments go from one place to the other for training, cross-training, and we would be used for that, not only for you, but for the other fire departments.
Any questions from?
Madam Chair, you you said that Mr. Yur had been in contact with Chris, was that check on the rules or something?
Checking on the rules and the history, and I also spoke with a county attorney about.
Does there have to be any transaction taking place to make it leave?
What we have done, the county has already purchased the land, and it was not bid on at the auction. So we're waiting for the deed to come back from Zikeas. Once the deed comes back from Zikeas, we can't report that deed to the county until the taxes and the back taxes and the attorney fees are paid. That's $7,917.11, that was the opening bid. So once we receive the deed from Zikeas and the county pays the taxes and the and the legal fees, then it's up to the county if they wanted to do a deed gift, or Mr. Yur wouldn't be more than that, talking about that as far as transferring the property to the fire department. And that would also make the property tax exempt going forward from 2023 because the fire department wouldn't own the property. So we wouldn't have to worry about the taxes off anymore.
I think the appropriate, after we discussed, I think the appropriate commissioner to make any motion or anything and sitting over here to my right.
Right.
But I don't have any discussion. I've heard Mr. Yur's presentation and everything and hear the details on it. I don't have anything else to say.
Does the county attorney has any input?
No, Chris is correct. Once the county gets the deed back from Zikeas, then I can do a prepare, deed a gift if if the commissioners wish to donate it to Yur Volunteer Fire Department, which which would be the right thing to do, I would think.
Commissioner Freeman?
I would certainly be in favor of that, Madam Chairman. In fact, the county of Gates donated that property and those adjacent properties to to the Yur Fire Department for their use in training and parking.
Commissioner Hoffler?
Aye, ma'am, ma'am.
All right, well, I'd like to make a motion when the taxes and everything are paid and like it's supposed to be, that we give this land to the Yur Volunteer Fire Department free of charge. I'll second that motion.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a gift.
It's when it costs much more to clean up that land than what the bid was. In fact, I think, best I remember, we got an ISO ordinance on the book. If somebody had turned it in, you know, it would be right back on the county to clean it up if the code enforcement deemed that it was necessary to be cleaned. Thank you, appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Very well. Good to see you brought your secretary with you, too.
Departmental reports.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it. Finance report. Ms. Alton. Good evening.
I don't have many updates for this evening for the board. In your packet, in the report, in the finance report, there is the sales tax revenue update that we received. This would have been for December sales, and that was actually the highest that we have received this fiscal year. So we are still on track with receiving, the projections are showing that we will receive more than what we had budgeted, so that's still on track there. Just an update with where we currently are with the fiscal year '23 budget planning. In February, the county manager and I had met with the department heads to go over their budget, and currently, I'm working on compiling all those requests into into the one report and looking at some revenue projections for next year. We do hope to have the budget presentation together for the April meeting. We are still waiting on some information that would be pertinent to the budget, such as retirement percentages, et cetera, that could change the figures. So I'm hoping to have those in this month so we can include those in the budget and have the budget presented in April. I would recommend that the board be thinking about, if we are still on track, that at that April meeting to discuss and set or schedule the times you would like to do the work sessions in between April and the May meeting. If we are on, like I said, if we if we stay on schedule, we are going to try to have the public hearing in May. That will give the board time to then come back together after public comments and things if there are any, you know, other work sessions you would like to have before we would need to adopt the budget in June. So, but I did want you guys to be thinking how many work sessions you would you would like to have, if you want department heads to be there, how we need to schedule them, et cetera, so that we can put that on the calendar next next month. And I did I did want to comment on the information that Mr. Lyons had presented for the for the one recommendation on the internal controls. I did speak with him when he first sent this information, and so we did discuss how important it is. It's one of those things, I think, probably most departments put to the side, those internal processes to write down because who has time to sit down and write the internal processes? But it is hard when you have such a small staff and somebody's out sick and you're and you're trying to to figure out what to do. So I did, I have discussed discussed that with him, so I was aware of that as well. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Alton?
I do have a question.
Okay.
Where are we staying at on prepayment? Not bank drafts, but actually being able to pay ahead for the water department. I know it was brought up a couple of meetings ago. I was just wondering.
As far as in a from the from the finance side, I was taking care of the part of how to get it set up in in the accounting system. Now, are we talking about prepayments or the bank drafts?
Prepayments.
All I was working on was making sure it was set up properly in the finance system. I'm not sure if that was a discussion that was to be discussed again at another meeting.
I think I think that, you know, we currently have an ordinance, and I believe that we were going to establish that once we got the policy, went from ordinance to policy, and then we were going to do that. Because I think I remember making a motion that we continue to let people make prepayments.
And so what what I made sure of is that whereas before it was posting to the revenue line, and that was a part of in his presentation earlier when he was talking about the water fund and the net position had gone down from because it the revenue line had been overstated because of the overpayment or prepayments. So now they're being posted in the correct place in the general ledger until that money is actually earned by the county. So on the finance side, it is correct, and that that was last time I was aware of of I don't know if that was if that answered the question.
So the bottom line is we're accepting.
We're accepting.
We can accept.
Prepayments.
Prepayments. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Don't go too far.
Okay.
First my notes. Now, we're going to have E911 Radio, Heather Seeny, and Jason Sample to present fours.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'll let Heather go first. We're going to talk about the status of the 911 Center, and then I'll get into the radio section.
Okay, so I have been tasked with obtaining quotes for various different equipment for the 911 Center, being which computers, software technology, servers, a recording system and whatnot. So I have the different quotes, but this evening is the Motorola radio quote that will tie into part of emergency management's stuff that's going on. I have it here. So far, the quote is for $312,000. This is just a portion of it. That will get our radio consoles that we use at the desks that transmit out into the public, all the wiring, the cables, the radios in the back room, up to the antenna. And this does not include, however, our backup center that is at Pro Quimmins. That is a whole separate separate quote for that. Currently, after speaking to the 911 Board in reference to the emergency telephone system funds, that is a group within the 911 Board that will cover part of this funding. Out of that $312,000, they will cover $118,025.15, which is like a 38. It comes as a percentage from part of the equipment that we use and a percentage of out of the service agreements that are required in order to keep all the systems functioning. So that will leave a balance of $194,164.65 that will have to come out of general funds from the county. With that being said, we I'm also investigating grant options. I'm also signed up to take the grant program classes that are going to be next week, and you have to attend those in order to get the grant at all. And it will cover portions or all. I'm going to find out exactly what all that entails so that I'll I'll know for the future. That, however, funds will not come until after the budget year. It'll be 2023, so I won't be able to use those funds currently.
Okay. Is that your presentation?
Yes.
Because I'm going to ask for questions to come in during this segment so we don't get confused. So she's talking about, Seeny is talking about the current 911 Center?
Yes.
Okay, so are there questions about her presentation? The expenditure she's talking about is for our current piece of.
The $118,000 comes from state?
Yes, from the 911 Board, yes.
911 board. And the grant that you were referring to, does that have a name? Do you know what that name of that grant is?
It's the PSAP managers' grant.
Okay.
Yeah. And it's going to be a virtual, online, you know, everything's held up from COVID, so it'll be something that we do online.
And you plan on attending?
Yes. Already registered.
Is this 118 on top of what our regular E-911 from the state, or?
The 118 is only the portion that the 911 board will cover.
Okay.
Out of that 312,000.
Okay.
The other almost 200,000 is on us.
Okay.
So that's the purpose for attending the grants sessions.
And Heather, was it 194?
Yes, sir.
The general fund is 194.
Correct.
Heather, do you think, is there anybody else that you think should attend that seminar with you?
I mean, I can invite anyone that I like. I have the email address. Only one person can apply for the grant, though, so.
I didn't know, maybe a backup person or something? Just a thought, don't have anybody in mind or anything.
Okay, yes, sir. I'll take it into consideration.
Okay, second part.
I want to propose that we move forward, that y'all vote to hopefully buy radios, which covers portables and mobiles for the fire departments, emergency management, EMS, and the Gates County Sheriff's Office. I do have a quote from Motorola. There is a Motorola representative here right now, that that would cover 120 fire department or fire certified radios, 60 radios for emergency management, EMS, and Gates County Sheriff's Office. That's 10 portable, mobile radios that go inside the box trucks, the medic units, 20 mobile radios to go inside the sheriff's officers' cars, because the portable is not going to cover across the whole county, but with the added repeater inside the added mobile unit, that'll give them coverage throughout the whole county. 25 of those, 25 mobile units will be included for emergency management and the volunteer fire departments. Again, that'll go inside the vehicles, only have two, but all the fire trucks, all their frontline trucks will get equipped with all the newer equipment. Now, this quote also includes extra batteries, charging stations, microphones, the programming, the encryption, the warranties. Right now, we're looking at $1.1 million, just shy of that. The price goes up come March 28th, because this is the end of the quarter. And Kim has some finance options, so when I get done, I'm pretty sure you'll have some questions out of those. Motorola is willing to give us a couple more discounts if y'all did move forward with it, and we can include, that $200,000 from the 911 center can be included in this loan or grant also. So that goes up a little bit to roughly 1.4, but that would cover everything. And that's, like I said, all the first responders for the county. And when I say emergency management, that also covers a couple of radios for me and for essential personnel that are going to come back in a case of natural disaster. Right now, I have two radios, and this is the newer one that was 2013. So the sheriff, he has, I believe, six radios for emergency management right now, and EMS has given them some of his radios, too. So I know the sheriff's farm is in dire need of them. But again, the Motorola rep is here, price goes up, you know, come March 28th, it's the end of the quarter, and that's what we're looking at, is to cover all the radios for all first responders for the county, sheriff's office, EM, volunteer fire departments, portables and mobiles. And I'm also applying for a grant also, it's for emergency management through the state. It's up to $400,000. It's a competitive grant. There's only about eight counties in the state that can apply for it just for population. Just about everybody's putting in for radios, from my understanding, other than a couple of vehicles, so I will be applying for that. I have until April 15th to get that paperwork together, and then that'll be approved, you know, come this new fiscal year. So my object and goal is if we get whatever money we do get approved, if for any, we'll go straight towards this loan, for the radios.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, and this might be for, is this like a state contract pricing?
Yes.
Or it is state contract pricing?
Let me, I'm trying to keep everybody. No, 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 that's okay. We need to do two things, one thing at a time. One thing, we need to vote if it's so pleased, the board commissioners, to buy the radios. The second, once we get that motion, then we're going to start talking about the options. I handed out a handout to you that I received when I arrived at the courthouse today. So the first motion I think we need is to purchase the radios.
So move. A motion, we need a motion.
He just motioned.
You go in second.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, the motion is second, that we purchase the radios. All in favor?
Ah.
Okay. Board clerk, make sure that's in the minute. Now, we're going to talk about Ms. Kim and the representative, if they want to come up. We have a handout at your desk where Kim has provided radio purchasing options, okay? So now we're going to purchase the radios. So now y'all get to hear all this minutia.
Well, I've got a question before she ever says anything.
Okay.
Okay, just so we are, we're on the same page. The information that you have in front of you right now is only for the radios, not for the radios plus what Heather was speaking about.
Separate.
It's separate. Because when I was pulling together this information today, I wasn't aware that she'd gotten her quote back with what was eligible or not, so I pulled that out.
Okay, hers is.
So just, what Jason was talking.
She wants.
Just the radios.
This is just for the radios.
For the radios. Make it clear, we just voted to purchase the radios for the first responders.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So on the purchase, the radio purchasing option sheet that Dr. Riddick was referring to, as Jason has stated, the purchase price is $1,996,320. That does not include sales tax. Sales tax is an additional $74,000, so just so you know what numbers we're talking about. Option one would be that the county would decide to purchase 100% using ARP funds. The county is, Gates County is allocated to receive in total $2,245,783. So if you purchase 100% of the radios, your remaining balance for your grant funds is the $1,149,463. This is an eligible purchase using ARP money. It falls under the revenue loss category that they had lifted those restrictions on. So you can purchase the radios through there. I did want you to realize, too, how much of that grant money you would have left, but you would not be paying interest. That's option one. Option two would be to finance the purchase. I have two different quotes on interest rates. I did not break that down in this, but I was just giving you a range depending on if you selected one year, three years, or 59 months. So your range of interest you could potentially pay is anywhere between $29,000 to $87,000. And I had also reached out to Southern Bank, because that is the bank that the county uses, and they were very gracious in trying to get me, in a very quick turnaround time, some of these interest rates as well to finance. In both options, we could pay, we could pay early, but there's some restrictions, or there's certain restrictions to that. So before I go any further, are we okay with just the financing, with the different, your interest in your different terms?
Was the early pay, was it critical? Did it move the meter any, the penalty you're talking about?
Well, there's no penalty to pay early. If we financed through Motorola, we would have to pay on your annual, whatever your annual, and correct me if I say this incorrectly, you would have to pay on your annual payment date, but you couldn't just put a portion to it, you'd have to pay the whole thing off. Whereas with going through the bank, it's kind of like with your mortgage, you could put more money towards it, but you wouldn't have to pay the whole thing off. So I have some, I have some potential revenue sources if we decided to finance. Medicaid Hold Harmless estimates have come out this month. Gates County is estimated to receive, and it's over the $596,000. As you guys recall, we received 90% in March, 10% in August of next year, only if the actual numbers come back and the county doesn't have to pay that money back. So you really don't know until August of the following year if you're going to get to keep your estimate, if you get more, or if you have to pay it back. But that's what we're estimating at for this year. Since I've been with the county, we have never had to pay back our Medicaid Hold Harmless money. I say that now, and this would be the year that something would change. And then, as Jason spoke about, he's also applying for that grant money. So if you're thinking very optimistically, if he received the full 400,000 plus what we're looking at for the Medicaid Hold Harmless, you do have the potential of being able to pay this off early, if that worked out that way. So any questions about that before I go into what I recommend that the board do with this information?
Any question before she gives the recommendation?
Well, that would be my first comment.
Okay.
What would you recommend?
Okay. Well, first I was going to say I would recommend that the board go ahead and purchase the radio before the quote expires, March 28th, because the prices will go up, and we are in desperate need of these radios.
And we have to.
Right. My second recommendation would be that the board would have a work session to discuss our various grants, and how the county would like, where we would like to go, how we would like to use those funds, before we just, right now, say, yeah, let's just go with option one. Because we don't know which projects we would like to use those ARP funds for, and depending on what the project is, you could potentially leverage other grants with the state. I don't know that you can leverage any other grants with the radios, but at least to have a work session to discuss that. In the meantime, we go ahead and finance the purchase while we determine, based on a couple of these revenue streams, that I feel like we could get some money. We may not get the full 400,000 on the grant, but the county could potentially get that money, and hopefully we get to keep our Medicaid Hold Harmless money. And that if we finance, that we do have the goal of trying to pay this off early so that the county does not have to pay a lot in interest. I did not include sales tax in our financing, because the county would have the money in the checking account to go ahead and pay it. We are not like the state, we are not tax exempt, so we have to, anytime we make a purchase, we have to pay the sales tax. But what I do at the end of the year is I can file with the North Carolina Department of Revenue for a refund back on those sales tax. So essentially, we're paying it right now, but we're going to get that 74 back, so I didn't think we should pay interest on something that, you know, we can zero out that way.
All right. Quick question. How much money, and this might be a question, how much money would it save us if we grouped them, the E-911 radios and the rest of radios together?
My manager with Motorola has given me approval that if you do group them together right now, we'll provide Heather with two backup radios for 911, they'll be portable radios, and the equipment that is on the Proquemis County 911 tower that needs to go up on the tower, that cost, which is in the 30-ish range, 30,000 range, they will absorb that within this, so that would be your discount if you merge the two together.
So if we go ahead and merge them together, we'll get our backup for Proquemis?
Go ahead and get that antenna system squared away under this project. We'll merge it together in that bundle, if you can do both of them before March 28th.
And the two radios that you're talking about will be the same quality as what we're going to be purchasing?
They will. They will be the high-quality APX 8,000, they'll actually be a dual-band radio that will do VHF or 7800. They'll sit in chargers up on Heather's console, and that'll satisfy your backup certification that she was worried about. So we'll make that happen.
So the two things that you just talked about, if we combine those, and roughly $30,000 expense for the tower absorbing that, the two radios, is that contingent upon whether we use our bank or Motorola for financing?
No.
Okay.
Is there a particular contract associated with that?
There is, Heather's got everything.
And has?
There's two separate quotes that we had, and we would just merge those together under one, and I think one is for roughly $312,000, $1,944,000. So those two together would be about $1,944,000. Anything that you've got to take off of that, any 911 fund, that you feel, I group finance the rest of it, this Motorola. No penalties for early payoff on to anything.
Could you speak in the mic?
We'll just stretch it out over time for you, give you an option for that. And the March 28th deadline is the deadline, and I can keep all the promo pricing and everything and kind of bundle it together and help you out price-wise, but I can extend it after that.
What kind of service contract? I mean.
The service contract as far as maintenance, the radios carry a, I believe there's a five-year warranty that we've got on the radios for factory warranty. The 911 center, I believe, has a one-year warranty on all that equipment. At that time, you would merge it into like a maintenance contract deal, and Heather, you've got the figures on.
Our maintenance contract is not dependent on the county to pay, though, the 911 board pays for that. They also pay for the upgrades to the radios every three years, which is, that's $31,368. And then through the course of five years of maintenance is another $60,700.
That they pay also?
They pay that also. So with the one year that's offered through Motorola, plus with the 911 board will cover, we won't need anything for a while, as far as that goes.
And so you feel like the contract obligation's been met by us, by Gates County, two years?
That's all into this proposal here. And I want to highlight one other thing, too. The radios in all are under a state contract. We priced it under the North Carolina state contract. But in addition to that contract for you, we added an additional $165,000 discount off a state contract in with the figure that you've got, so I don't want you to think that we just went state contract, we really went load because of the quantity of the radios. And then we're going to add the extra little sweetness for you if you can get it all bundled before the 28th.
Salesmanship.
Any other questions or clarification?
Well, I guess one last comment, that if we choose tonight just to go with the financing option, the board has a work session to discuss our grants. You can always come back and say, no, we want to use the grant money for the radios, and we can go ahead and pay it off. That's always an option. But I did want the board to at least have, you know, a work session to discuss the various grant funds that we have, and is this what you want to use them for before we just decided that tonight?
So we check our calendars and put a date for?
Work session?
Yep.
Right now, Seeny needs a motion to finance through, which one was it? Which one did y'all choose?
I think, well. Yeah, I'm in favor, option one.
Well, I don't think we've decided on the financing.
The financing.
So the 28th is coming, so what do we want to, we got to bundle?
Was there any significant savings between Motorola or Southern Bank?
Southern Bank did give us a lower interest rate, and if we pay early, we don't have to pay the full amount off at one time. So if we come into 500,000, then we can put towards the principal, whereas if we try to pay off early through Motorola financing, we would have to pay whatever the remaining balance was. Unless, unless we were putting money down, net 30 days of the contract, that would be considered a down payment with Motorola, so.
And it's not going to affect our pricing if we go with Southern Bank? I'd like to make a motion to purchase the radios for.
Rescue.
For the rescue, I would like to bundle.
First responders.
First responders, E-911, I would like to group them all together, go ahead and get that savings, and finance through Southern Bank. and, uh, and finance through Southern Bank. That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor in a second? All in favor? Need anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we need to.
We got to set aside our workshop.
I got the workshop down, y'all can go.
One, one more addition to that. How quick can we get some of those radios? I'm sorry.
The sheriff's, we, we actually got two demo radios to use with two deputies to help him out.
Yeah, excuse me, you, you need to speak in the mic.
We actually, um, got two demo radios for the sheriff to use, two portables like this with mics, uh, to help him out because he was in a jam with a couple of deputies he had just hired. That was for 90 days. We have commitment from Motorola that we will work on getting the sheriff his radios first out of the branch. So we'll put priority on that. Uh, the rest of it due to the shipping delays and everything that everybody's going through, I just can't guarantee the rest of them, but we will prioritize his.
Ship, uh, sheriff's department and the E911?
Yes, and the E911 consoles will definitely, in fact, E911, they have already went ahead and pre-built, put that in a pre-build phase just to jump the gun, hoping that you would go ahead and move forward with this. So they'll be thankful for that.
Thank you, thanks for all your work, thank y'all.
Thank you.
Any other questions before they leave? Okay, be fine, okay.
Good.
Thank you. So we need to look at a, um, work session date. If, if you don't have your calendars, can't figure it out, I'll send an email first thing in the morning.
Just let me know.
I'll send an email first thing in the morning with some dates for us to consider. Commissioner Crater?
I'll, I'll talk to you.
Okay, all right, all right. All right, where am I now? Public hearing. Ms. Cherry. I need a motion to go into, to.
I make a motion, we go into public hearing. For the, do I need to say title 15 land use ordinance?
Is there a motion on the floor to open the public hearing? Lisa Cherry, planning administrator, okay, she's at the podium. And it's concerning Gates County 2021 Title 15 Land Use Ordinance. So we need a motion to open the public hearing.
So I make a motion that we open for public hearing for the Gates County 2021 Title 15 Land Use Ordinance.
Second?
Second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Freeman seconded, we are now in public hearing.
Yes, we're here for a public hearing for the text amendment 02201 TA dash 01. This proposed text amendments to the Gates County 2021 Title 15 Land Use Ordinance. This, this text amendment is to amend the land use ordinance sections 152-508E2 and 155-608F where misdemeanor penalties were included in the enforcement procedures. These were reviewed by the planning board and it was heard in the January 2022 meeting and was recommended, approved by, and approved by unanimous vote and forwarded to you now. And this was due to the state legislature recently adopting in their session law that we have to rescind these misdemeanor penalties. So that's what we're here for tonight.
Okay.
Madam Chair, in reviewing the document, um, there were a whole lot fewer strikes and changes. I mean, normally we see a whole bunch of changes, we don't only see, um, two, I believe here. There are struck three. Okay. Uh, but anyway, um.
Two, you're right, two, I'm sorry.
Two. Boy, we, we're obligated and basically forced, this is.
Sorry, so we don't have an option?
This is the state saying just check the block. I'll make a motion that, uh, well, actually, can I make this motion in public hearing?
Not yet. Do we have any? Okay, do we have anyone to speak? Did anyone, I saw a sign-up sheet, no one, no one? Okay, good, all right. Then I need a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second? Second, we have a motion to close the, to close the, um, public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, okay. Now, we need a motion and a second. It's requested to adopt ordinance amendment 202201 TA dash 01, amending the Gates County 2021 Title 15 Land Use Ordinance for compliance with recent legislation that requires decriminalizing of some local ordinances as the amendments are both reasonable and in the public interest for the following reason. One, unnecessary to comply with the standard set forth in the North Carolina General Statute for Development and to Consistency Statement and remains consistent with the adopted 2017 Gates County Land Use Plan. So I just, I just read what we are, we are adopting and the board clerk has that, uh, language. So do I have a motion?
I move that we make that adoption.
You have a motion in a second to make that adoption, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you, Joe Leith.
Thank you. All right, we don't have any old business, we're just about to the end, let me get to new business. We have, we've taken care of the proposal for audit contract and, uh, Mr. Lyons was here. We have a Roanoke Connect Holdings LLC request to partner for a grant. Uh, I'll get to that. This is in your packet. Dear Chair, Dr. Riddick, please accept this letter as Roanoke Connect Holdings LLC's formal request to partner with Gates County to submit grant application for the North Carolina Great Grant as well as federal grant opportunities that are currently and in future available to your county as it relates to deployment of broadband services. Your continued support and partnership is so important to us as we are your local broadband provider focused on providing the most innovative services to your essential first responders, education, healthcare, courts, and administrative facilities, as well as to the residents, businesses, and visitors that are an integral part of your county. I ask that the county board of commissioners accept this letter in open session and affirm our request to enter into a partnership in pursuing funding opportunities from the state and federal government by March 31st, 2022. As always, thank you for your continued support, partnership with Roanoke Connect. So they're asking for, uh, uh, an affirmation that we will partner with them or give them permission to apply for more funding from the state and federal governments for broadband.
Sounds like it's just a formality that we're doing in an open session. It's not costing us anything.
No, sir. Do I have a motion? Just.
So move that we approve our continual support of the Roanoke Connect Holdings.
And you second?
Second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Donation of property, this is a small piece of property that we received from a former citizen, I, I think, Mr. Godwin, that wants to donate a piece of property. It's 475 acres located at the intersection of Highway 158 and Hackley Road in the White Oak vicinity, triangular in shape. This piece of land is vacant and uncultivated with a single electricity pole erected on the lot. She stated she inherited this land from her parents. My reason for wanting to donate this part is that I am now elderly myself and wish to ensure that this land will benefit the county in the most optimal way. Having grown up in Gates County, I maintain a strong sense of loyalty to the place I still think of as home. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion we accept that as presented. Uh, any discussion from our attorney?
I'll, I'll second the motion.
Well, before you go, I've looked into this piece of property and I think it would be more of a liability to the county than it would be, uh, an asset. It is a triangular piece of land, uh, right on 158 near White Oak as you turn on Hackley Road to the right. And, um, it's got a light pole on it and I don't see that would have any value whatsoever to the county for use of any sort. And I really, I've, I've looked at it, I know, I know the individual. She contacted me first and then wrote a letter. I told her to write a letter to Chairman Riddick and to the board. But, uh, this is a situation I think we should stay away from.
After, after hearing that discussion, Madam Chairman.
Sometimes you're too fast for that.
And also, uh, knowing the, the esquire, Mr. Godwin, as being the most efficient attorney, I will rescind my motion.
And Madam Chair, I can't believe I, I seconded that motion he made over there.
Don't let it rain.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor not to accept the property as read into the minutes.
But thank you for the generosity, however.
I'm looking at my board clerk. I need a, I need a motion to deny acceptance.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to deny and, uh, and certainly thank him for the generosity, however.
Okay.
Go for the thought.
Need a second?
I'll second it.
So move, okay. Moving right along.
Oh, we got to vote on it.
Let vote. I'm trying to get these men out of here if we're talking about this March matter, but go ahead. All in favor?
Aye.
So move, okay. Next on it would be two more items. One is a board discussion of new position human resource director. I spoke with, um, Mr. Wilson before he left and he said that he, what he's asking is for us to consider a human resource position for the county and that tonight just ask the staff to, uh, create the job description, all of that, and bring it back at our April meeting for discussion. That's all he's asking. So let's hear it, do you want to move forward and have the staff charged to just get the job description and all the other, um, documentation? We need to make a, make an informed decision before we go forward.
I, I would like to make a motion to look into the human resource director and also reach out to other counties and see their qualifications and everything.
Okay. Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board clerk, um, since Mr. Wilson is absent, please delay him to, and the staff of preparing all that documentation to bring back to our April meeting. The last thing, uh, on the agenda is discussion of meeting times. Mr. Williams, Tim Williams, made a, um, comment about, um, the meeting time for the planning board and the board of adjustments about changing, um, those planning times. What did I do with it? Here we are. And I'm going to read this from the county manager. What we did, uh, we was talking about it and he did some research and it's not as simple as we thought. We, we're in favor of it, just got to do it different way. It states, "At the request of Commissioner Freeman, the topic of meeting times of the county board of adjustments and accounting planning board have been placed on this month's meeting agenda for discussion by the board. Presently, the regular meeting date of the board of adjustments and planning board are both on the third Tuesday of the month with the book, the board of adjustments meeting time being 1 o'clock and the planning board meeting time being 3 o'clock as established by the board of commissioners entitled 15 Land Uses of the Gates County, County Code of Ordinances. The provisions of North Carolina General Statute 160D dash 308 Rules of Procedure allows for either the governing board to establish meeting dates and times for appointed boards or to allow such boards to establish their own meeting dates and times. I have found it more commonplace that appointed public boards, such as the board of adjustment and planning board, to be afforded the opportunity to decide their own regular meeting date and time rather than having it assigned to them. In contrast, under the same Title 15 of the county code, the county agricultural advisory board has been given the opportunity to set its own regular meeting dates and time as opposed to it being assigned by the board. In Gates County, the meeting date and time has been assigned by means of the county code. As such, any change in the meeting day or time of one or both public boards would require the initiation of a, a proposed code amendment and the conduct of a duly advertised public hearing for any proposed change to be voted upon by the board. I recommend for the board's consideration the amending of the county code to allow the board of adjustments and planning board to establish their own meeting date and time as is the case with the agricultural advisory board, thereby providing consistency throughout county code Title 15 and how appointed boards are allowed to conduct their business and organization. Should the board desire to continue to assign meeting dates and times to the board of adjustments and planning board, I would recommend confirm with the chairman of each such board prior to initiating any proposed code changes for their input on behalf of their respective boards." So it's not that simple. Because it's in the county code, if we're going to change their, uh, allow them to change their times, we're going to have to have a public hearing and all of that resolution and things because it's in the county code. This is a, a structured board. I asked Ms. Cherry to stay. Is she still here, did she leave? Come up. I asked her to stay because she also looked at this code. At the time, we did not realize it was in the county's code. So it's not like a, you know, a committed policy or things like that.
That's exactly right.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, yes. That is exactly right. It is set in our ordinance and the governing board has decided to, um, have it in our ordinance and made that decision. Uh, and you have a choice, it's a May, and we did do that. And the times are set in our ordinance as well as the meeting day. So it's exactly as you stated. That is fact, so.
Would you like, to the board discussion, would you like to, to give them the opportunity to, to set their own meeting time? To do that, we have to rescind.
I think that was grand that, uh, we, uh, we hear from the chairman of those boards. But, uh, at the same time, after hearing two from so many citizens, quite a few that have voiced, and I think Ms. Howell and trying to think of others, that would have brought up the fact that, uh, they were not able to go to certain events because of the time, to bring issues and, and meet with those boards. After speaking with a couple of board members, uh, I heard that those board members are, are aged and that they like the time of day that the officer don't have to drive at night. And with that, certainly I listened to them, but also reminded them it's for the citizens, not for the board. The time of meeting primarily is for the citizens. So, uh, I, I think having the chairman of those and maybe discuss that part, that is it for them or is it for the citizens?
Also, you have to think about the people who have to be there. This is not just the citizens and the board members, but people who come in with.
Applications.
Applications and all, and some of those, uh, but I think we just need to let, um, each, uh, that have a public hearing, I guess, is what we, we need to have. But we need to have some ideas what the boards are thinking because we might not need a public hearing.
Yes, yes, I, I agree. And exactly as you stated, that would, that would be a fair thing, most certainly to do, being that we have set that in our code of ordinances, um, at this point, uh, that we could do that and let the chair and let the boards have that. You, we do our, our regular chair and vice chair elections in June. You know, that is something that we could definitely look at. But it will take time to go through that process, so please realize that too. Then we have to think about locations, i- if it is chosen at night. You know, we have to think about those things. So, and yes, it's going to be a mix. And we are here for the citizens, we're here for the public. But we also have a board that people applied knowing those times, so we need to realize that as well. That those times have been the same, I know, since I've been here. So, and it has been in our code of ordinances. So we've had people apply at these times and, and knew that. So we, we have to realize everything. Are, are we going to please everyone all the time? We know that answer. But I do want to be fair, I, I feel, you know, and being involved with them and having a, hopefully a good rapport. So that's just some things to consider and let them have that, that, uh, that engagement, I think would be very, very, uh, necessary.
You have had people make application and come to a meeting with representation?
Yes.
Like an attorney or?
We have had that.
Yeah, so, you know, there's that going on too.
That's what I was thinking about, because I was on the planning board.
Or somebody coming there, a surveyor or something like that, and they would have to come, you know, so.
And also.
That's to take consideration.
Also too, i- if it's something that we know is going to be, everything's important. So please do not think that we do not think anything and that all is important. But if it's something that we see that the citizens want engagement and want to have representation or anything, we always have considered special meetings, special meeting times and to have that citizen engagement. So that is something the board has always, I've never had a problem with anyone wanting to schedule a special meeting or a different meeting day. And we advertise that according to the North Carolina meeting laws, you know, set by statute. We, we do, um, do that as well. So know that we consider that. So if that helps. So if that helps, hopefully.
Ms. Crater?
So it would have to be a public hearing.
To rescind it, yes, sir.
To rescind it. So it sounds like a little homework needs to be done.
I think that each board, you need to talk to each of your boards and get some ideas about what they are interested in.
And doing that.
And also take a interest in what the public says, too, but we need to get theirs, you know, some feedback.
Yeah, and it's important, too, and just not for this board, but for other boards, that if a representative, whether it be the chairperson or somebody representing the board, that when they come, and this is for all things, but I'm thinking about it for this group right now, when they come and make a proposal or recommendation, whatever, we need to make sure that the board has voted on the recommendation that we're hearing. It's not just the chair or the representative come and say, and I think that's what we're, you know, what we're hearing. I mean, for your group, that would be important, that they took a vote.
Yes.
And then the vote's being represented here when they come.
And that's one of the reasons I asked Ms. Cherry to stay, because I want her to take it back to each one of those boards and get their input before we decide what, you know, what we need to do. We still have time, you know, if they come back and another conversation was had or whatever. But I suggest that April, they could bring something back to the board or, because it's the next meeting. We're going to have, why are you smiling?
I'm sitting here, I'm sitting here thinking, we're going to have to run an ad on the public here.
I know, we're not going to do that right now.
It would be, you know, I'm not trying to persuade the board or whatever, but it would be very nice if they, if they were sure this is what they, what they wanted to do.
This is what, is that what they want?
Right, right.
Also, I'm just thinking, you know, this is getting into budget time and everything, and we keep putting all things to April, I mean, we've put a couple of things in April already. It seems like to me tonight, it gets into.
Getting crowded.
Yeah.
Well, this would have to go to the planning board, definitely. So you would have an April meeting for them just to hear this, and then Board of Adjustment meets as necessary. So we would just, if we didn't have any applications, and just to realize the process, if we had no applications for them to meet, we would just be meeting to ask them this question. So we could, you know, possibly poll everyone and get some feedback, possibly. So just being a good steward of, you know, our tax dollars, that's something to think about because.
And y'all already met this month, correct?
Yeah, we had, we did not have any business this month, so, but.
I say less have a report back by May because they don't know if they're going to even have to meet, and that way, and they're going to have your elections in June anyway.
Yes, we do those in June. So, you know, if we started now, that's something, and then bringing it back to you, the board, to vote on, you know, and you get the recommendation, and then you would make your decision. It wouldn't be probably until May and June to amend that. So, and the process takes a little while, it does. So at least then.
I'd like to make a motion that we ask that the planner meet with, I mean, that the board will come back to us. Did we say May? With their recommendation.
May would be, I think would be appropriate.
Okay.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, commissioners and county, what the county manager, Commissioner comments before the chair update, then we have adjournment, so we're just about there. Commissioner Freeman, no comments to today?
Thank you. I appreciate what the board has discussed tonight, certainly what was brought forth about the housing and the folks that were in attendance, but also the work they've done throughout the years. And we have heard from that and we've seen progress through that and through those committees and through the SS, so appreciate that. They want to bring to the attention of everyone as far as the COVID thing. I know that the chair has asked me to kind of keep an eye on that, and that is certainly we, the numbers are changing, changing for the good of our communities as far as infections. However, they still exist, so if you've not been vaccinated, certainly take advantage of that, and if you've not had your booster, take advantage of that. The highest rate that I have gotten through our Alamo Regional Health is Bertie County, and that is with the Department of Corrections. I think they had 77 new infections, but as of our case house in Cordeus, we did not rise above anything that had been there before, so that's a good sign for us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffler?
Oh, don't you want to talk about the mental health?
Well, I brought that in to say a little something about it, but I had brought that up in the commissioners' meeting that they were going to be here on March the 10th. Thank you, Commissioner Hoffler. They did, Monarch certainly brought their new van, if you will, so psychiatric patients can be examined and evaluated onboard. It operates between Halifax County and Gates. We, I have a photograph of it, if your eyes are better than mine, you might be able to see it, but it is like a motorhome to a degree. It has a board, three folks that'll be looking after that and making those evaluations. Now, save some trips, and also, as far as monetary savings, that, and we know from both our magistrates and from law enforcement side, IVCs and voluntary commitments versus having a mobile crisis and having someone to evaluate a mental situation and not having a transport and maybe having them evaluated at home and kept at home. So, anyway, so thank you.
Yeah, it's certainly an asset that we do not have before, that we could have people here providing services. I'd just like to thank everyone for attending, certainly a lot of things going on in our community, a lot of positive things. I hope that that positivity continues. We have a vision, and we need to work towards our goals. And I think, you know, I'm a history person, and I do think that we do need to maintain the integrity of our two Rosenwald schools that exist. They are few and far between at this time, and I'll do whatever I can to help that cause.
Okay. Commissioner Crater?
I've got a few things to add. One thing, all the citizens coming out tonight, it's good to see everybody's faces. I would like to see the whole place full every time. Housing Committee, thank you all for what y'all are doing. You're changing people's lives. It makes a big, that's something, something to be proud of. Ms. Reba, thank you for all the work you do throughout the county. A lot of it goes unheard, but we do appreciate everything you do. E-911 and Emergency Management, thank you for all the time, and Insurance Department, I know they've worked on it, too, putting the time in, looking at these radios, consider radios infrastructure.
Mm-hmm.
It's a big vital part of our community. So we're working on infrastructure. So, but once again, thank you all for coming and look forward to seeing you next time.
Commissioner Owens?
Again, Housing Committee, thank you for all that you do. I remember the first time I met Henry Jordan, didn't know who he was. I went to Core Peak, took my two young sons with me, and we went out there and volunteered. And I saw this huge, tall old guy. And so that was my first meeting with Henry Jordan. I forget how many years ago that's been, but that was a long time ago. And Henry was, he was committed and dedicated to that committee and what they did, and he was a champion for it, so just want to give him that shout out. I received this in the mail from Nash County, and it's something that I've shown to the commissioners. It's a solid waste ticket that you hang on your mirror, and when you get to the gate, if you get in, you don't have one of those, they just motion for you to drive out of the facility. You know, we've had a conversation about this kind of thing. We talked about decals and things like that, but this is something that you can put in your vehicle, you know, if you have more than one vehicle. It makes a little more sense. And they sent me a letter with it, how they're proposing it. It's new for Nash County as well. And they sent a letter saying, why am I receiving this permit? Why is the county doing this? It's real interesting. They say in there that people who are not paying their fair share are abusing the system. So we're going to be looking at this. Again, I shared it with the commissioners here just real briefly when we got here to the meeting. So you'll be hearing about that. Hopefully, it'll be something that'll help us. And that's all I have. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Okay, for chair update, I have four items, very briefly. The Uniton Monument, that's the monument that the Monument Committee brought to the commissioners last year in lieu of addressing the Confederate monument across the street. Across the, took my focus away. Anyway, I talked with the committee chair, Mr. Lee Brooks, we call him Mo. I spoke to him twice, the last time was Monday, and I asked him to get, to reconvene that committee, the same committee, and start planning on the program and the unveiling of the monument. It's just about ready. It's been slowed down by COVID and supply chain and all of that, but they have reached out to us. I've talked to the county manager. He's chosen the space, which is right across the street here in vicinity of the Confederate monument, and he's going to prepare that so that they can come and pull the slab, set the monument, and then we're going to wrap it up until the unveiling. We have to choose a date and a range date, and I've asked his committee to make some suggestions. I also shared with him, and I shared with Commissioner Hoffler, who's my co-chair, when we were working with the committee, that during that ceremony, that program, we're going to have a short program here in the courthouse, and then move across the way to unveil and have a little ribbon cutting and everything. But we want to recognize those staff persons at the high school that helped with Mr. Beaman when he was, you know, in distress. So we're going to recognize them individually and as a group and have him here as well for that program. That shows unity. On that monument, they wanted to call it the United We Stand or the Unity Monument. What better way to show the unity in Gates County for this most recent efforts that they had at that high school? So they're going to be working on that. The commissioners, I asked you to be working on logistics, you know, the county manager already knows what he has to do as far as choose the location, get it graded so the water doesn't pool. He told me all this stuff. I don't know what he's talking about. But anyway, we got to get a program together, we got to get the announcement out, invitations out, think about who you would like to invite, but it's open to the public, but we want to make sure some people get, you know, invitations from the board and from the committee. We want the committee to drive this, so we're going to keep you informed of that, but that's finally coming to fruition after almost a year. You heard about the urgent repair program grant application. I did talk with Michael Irvin last week about that, and he wants to collaborate, as I said, with the Housing Committee so that we can get that moving swiftly. The third thing, and almost the last, the North Carolina Rural Summit will be held Monday and Tuesday, 21st and 22nd in Raleigh Hilton. I was invited to participate on a breakout session, a three-person panel, discussing building better broadband, what's next for infrastructure and digital equity. I will be on the panel with Assistant Secretary Nate Denny and Director Angela Bailey, and my role is to speak about the criticality of broadband service and digital equity from the role of an educator and elected official from a rural county. So I'm not just representing Gates County, I'm representing the rural counties, and I've been working on that presentation, short presentation, and I met with the panel by Zoom last Friday for about an hour, trying to get ready for next week, so I'll be traveling on your behalf, and they're paying all the expenses. No, we're not spending any of the county's money for me to sell to Hilton. They're paying, they're paying all my expenses, especially gas. So, I mean, that would, that would seal when they pay that. Now, another announcement, I just got an email this week. I serve on the Gates Partnership for Help Committee as the liaison with the commissioners. They asked me about a couple of months ago about purchasing some AEDs, what automated external defibrillators, AEDs, with some of the grant money that we have in the county. So I said, put a proposal together and see what you're talking about. So I got in touch with the Superintendent Barry. He sent it to me, I don't know, yesterday? I don't know. Yesterday, I don't know where they sent it, sometime this week. But anyway, I have it, and I'm going to, did I forward to the commissioners? I've been having email trouble, but anyway, you got it? Okay. But anyway, we're going to try to partner with them and purchase AEDs for all the facilities, all the schools in the school system. And when I talked to the county manager, he said, that's a good idea. Why don't we make sure we have them for our facilities, our county buildings as well? So we're going to try to get, not try, we're going to try to use some of the funding, it's minimal, to get the AEDs for the school systems, community center, all of their property, and for the county buildings that we have, so that we can also, and with the latest incident with Mr. Beaman, this is right on time as far as, and they said their AEDs are end of life. So we're going to work with them, and he had all specs. And finally, at our February meeting, Mr. Bright, he's still here, mentioned fire training for current volunteers and the need for fire training opportunities for our youth. I called him a few days later and had a conversation with him, and I said, okay, I'm going to see what we can do. I called Mr. Felton, the chair of the Board of Education. I called the superintendent, who is, you know, Dr. Barry Williams, and we had a conversation. He said, well, let me do my work. I said, okay. So I didn't say anything, because you know how if I say something, it's gone. But anyway, finally, he sent something back to me verbally. I said, I need something in writing. So I had a brief conversation with Kim, I think she's gone, the finance director and the county manager, because they're working on the budget. So I had a conversation, what's the possibility of the commissioners partnering with the school system to be, to start a, where is it?
Fire academy.
Fire academy. A fire academy. I got it right here. And this is what, I mean, Dr. Barry Williams said. "The Gates County School CTE Department would like to offer students an opportunity to become certified firefighters through a fire academy. Students could enroll in an introductory public safety course as early as their freshman year of high school and dempeсы through three levels of firefighter technology. Various credentials could be offered throughout each course, so students are available to be hired as soon as they graduate." So commissioners, I think we're going to get a proposal, a formal proposal, from the school system during their budget hearing when they come, like we did with the ROTC, and we're going to propose, I hope, with your approval, but I didn't promise anybody anything, I just got this proposal, to fund that, the staff, the teacher position, just like we funded the ROTC position. That's a good collaboration for this county. It speaks of the future as far as training, what do you call it? Grow our own, you know, get them excited, maybe they'll stay, but if not, then they have another credential in their toolkit when they graduate. So I think this is a good project for the collaboration of the Commission, Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education, not only for the county, but for our youth, so they have another CTE step forward as far as what we need in this county. I thank Mr. Bright for his comments that night. I told him I was writing, he said, I saw your writing. I don't write for nothing. And I called him, and he educated me about firefighting. I know all about firefighting, you know, I'm ready to join myself. But I thank you for your leadership in this. I hope the board, when they come with the presentation, that will seriously consider funding that position so that we can have some youngsters, I'm not saying anything about his age, I'm just saying some youngsters coming to the firefighting, and hopefully some females and some minorities also be interested. So I just wanted to announce that tonight, that finally I got what I asked for from the superintendent and Mr. Felton, and his board is aware, that's why I'm bringing it to the board now.
Excellent. Great idea.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is. And with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Oh, my little note. He needs to make an announcement.
Remove that mask.
Look at him.
I didn't want to be up here, just to make that clear. But just for the sake of being transparent, I want to mention that our live stream today disconnected about 6:40 PM. Our process when we do this live stream into the YouTube channel is we live stream and we locally record the video as a backup. There's a lot of reasons why the stream could stop, but from here, the only thing I can look at is internet connectivity, and we didn't lose internet connectivity. The stream just, message came up and said the live stream ended, so I have no way to troubleshoot the YouTube side of this, but we are recording. So I didn't disrupt the meeting, but when this happens, after the meeting, we will take that recording and then post that recording to the website.
Okay.
So for those out there now... So for those out there in the audience and everybody looking at their phones, it'll be two video platforms. The live stream will be up there until about 6:40 or so, and then you'll see when it said just live stream ended, and then we'll post the recording that we've locally done.
Okay.
So, so we'll still capture the meeting. Only thing is, is that the live stream folks will just have to wait until the meeting's over and then go back and review it.
Got you.
That, that's all we can do at this point. We don't have any kind of redundant internet connections and whatnot, so no difference in a power failure that may disrupt the internet. Going forward, if the board decides that they want to continue the live stream, then what we will have to do is stop the meeting. I'll have to make a new video platform session and then restart the meeting.
Okay.
That'll be something, I guess, we can all discuss beforehand. And instead of me sitting over there raising my hand and saying, hey, we need to take a break.
No, you're fine.
Right, so I just wanted to make that clear. I saw some people out there looking at their phones, and some people were gracious enough to let me know, but I was aware of it, but the recording was still going, so there was nothing I could do, but just let the recording go, so I didn't say anything.
But we thank you for that. Can we put an announcement on our webpage about the process, so they'll know when they go?
Yeah, I meant, we can say something and say that if there's technical issues during the live stream, we try to do that as a convenience. You know, we do encourage people to come to the meeting, but we want to give the convenience for both ways, but if the live stream does disconnect, our only recourse for the ones who didn't attend the meeting, they'll just have to watch, wait till the meeting's over, then go back and review the recorded session.
Now, what I was saying is, right now, could someone put it on our website that we had technical difficulties and to wait, whatever, whatever? If we could get that done, I don't know who does that, but it would cut down on the phone calls to, to everybody, you know, what's going on. But we'll talk afterwards.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to make that clear.
You just want to be at the microphone. We all do.
That's what I did, man.
Thanks for the help, Dave.
Now I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.